Yeah.
The Select Board meeting as part of this joint meeting to order with Michael Bettencourt, Amy Shapiro and I are present.
And I will call the Register Planning Board to order with Heather Hannan, Ewing Scott, Sally Dale and myself, the adjutant chair, present. And if we could bring our candidates into the room, please?
Okay. And so you wish me to make them as panelists, each one, so you can see?
Yeah, yeah, then they can, that's the way they can talk, right?
Yep. Well, also that non-panelists, you actually don't see their video.
Oh, no, we definitely want to see their smiling face.
Yes.
They may not wish to see ours.
Okay, do well, Hussain. Okay, everybody's on.
Excellent. Susan, do you want to introduce yourself and I'll jump in and introduce the planning board?
So I'm missing some.
Oh, sorry.
So hello, I'm Susan Verdicchio, Chair of the Select Board. With me tonight are Amy Shapiro and Mike Bettencourt. And we are endeavoring to have this be as close to the format of an in-person meeting as possible.
And I think we're missing one candidate.
Ah, yes, Bill is not actually here. I don't see him in the audience. Oh, there he is, I see him.
Oh, he is.
He's now there. Okay.
Okay.
And... Yep, here he comes.
Okay, excellent. So, welcome candidates. I am the, I'm the adjutant chair, current chair of the Planning Board. I want to welcome you to this selection process for the interim Planning Board position. I and the other members of the two boards, Planning and Select, like to thank you for your interest and dedication to making Winchester an even better place to live. It is unfortunate that we only have one position to fill this evening, which means that some of you will unfortunately not be joining the Planning Board. But there are many other volunteer opportunities in town and we hope that if you are not selected this evening, that you will reach out again to volunteer for some of those other positions. Winchester runs on volunteers. It also runs on really good staff. We do have a lot of volunteers. So what our process this evening will be to, we're going to interview the candidates in alphabetical order. We will, everyone will be getting the same questions. These are pre-selected questions. We're going to ask you to try to keep your answers to around two minutes. And the, the boards will have a chance for some follow-up questions. And after we've gone through all of the interviews, we will, the boards will select the candidate. And we're going to be doing that through a vote where the selected candidate will have the majority of votes, meaning more than fifty percent, more than fifty percent, which is why we need an odd number. If we do, if no one candidate gets fifty percent of the vote, more than fifty, then we will select the candidates who have received the top two vote tallies. And we will move to the next round until we achieve a single winning candidate. So, um, if my alphabet works still, let me pull up my list of candidates here. Great. I have lost my list of candidates. And please let me know how you want to be addressed. So our first person is William Pouchet. And how would you prefer to be addressed? You are muted.
Sorry. Please call me Bill.
Okay. So Bill, I have the, I have the delight of asking everyone questions and please try to keep your answers to two minutes. So, please list two challenges, issues and opportunities facing Winchester between now and 2030 that the Planning Board will have a key role in addressing.
Um, two issues. Well, as we all know that within the Boston area, housing has become very, very expensive. And so housing affordability is a big issue in the region. And Winchester will not be able to solve the problems of the Boston metro area. However, Winchester certainly should do its part to provide as much affordable housing as practical within the community. Another issue is balancing, and I have, I'm aware of your Winchester Master Plan 2030. The other issue that I think is really the big one in my mind is balancing development with preservation, as you stated, and also as part of that building community, which is also in your master plan. As I said in my letter, I've been here thirty years in a historic house on Church Street and I love the town and I would love to, as a, as balance, as much as, as, as much as I can to help the goal of balancing development with preservation of the character of the community.
Thank you. What are the priorities that you would bring to the board and how do they relate to the existing board priorities?
Well, getting back to the first question, the priorities in my mind, and as I expressed in my letter to the board, is that Winchester has a quality of community that's unique to a Massachusetts community. It's not Lexington with Mass Ave driving through it, et cetera. It's partly because Winchester is within the valley with no major routes through it. And we have a very unique situation downtown where it has characters. And I, and I, as I said in my letter, that I have done a lot of work in England over nine years. And Winchester, in my opinion, comes closest, as close as an American town can to an environment rich, as rich as a really nice English town. And I would like to work to maintain the quality of environment. Now, that doesn't mean shutting out development because as I also said in my letter to the town, as part of my experience, I worked closely with a very good friend of mine in, as his project manager for developing large projects for New Hampshire standpoint and in Manchester and Concord and smaller ones around. And I come from, I have the four years of experience from the developer side. So that, that allows me to see and understand both sides of the equation.
Okay, third question. What unique blend of skills, experience and perspectives do you bring? And how in particular would they help the Planning Board advance its goals?
So as part of the application form that Brian sent me, it asks about collaboration. Most of my experience has been with very large hospitals, academic medical centers. And within those projects, there can be ten to twenty user groups, all with their own goals and interests. The user groups will, might come with a chairman of a clinical service who might come with a big ego. On the other side, you have the administration of the hospital, which wants to temper the demands that the chairman's making on space. And then thirdly, you have the nurses who really knows what's going on. So in each, each case with each department, you're in the middle of these three, working with them to form the best department and build the best department for them. And so that is a situation of constant collaboration in larger projects. The other one I mentioned was that I come with four years of experience from the developer standpoint. And so I have seen intimate, I have seen, I've seen the performers that go forward to try and make the development profitable for the development. And I understand a lot of the issues on the developer side. And then the third one is that in designing hospitals, you're constantly researching. You might see a surgical, an operating room, surgical suite, four years apart from the last one you saw. And so when you go into that particular problem, you need to research what the latest things are, what the latest development is in surgery and et cetera. And I have, being retired, I have the time and the inclination to do research needed by the Planning Board to go ahead and inform decisions that the Planning Board needs to make.
Okay, we are actually doing almost right on time. Thank you. One last question is, do you have or do you anticipate you may have any conflict of interest in this position?
No, I can't see any conflict of interest coming up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And so, may I comment? I like Heather's t-shirt.
Oh, Heather, what are you wearing? Nantucket? I can't even see.
Sorry, I didn't know you could see it.
So, we have, we have a couple of minutes. Does, does any of the board members want to ask a question?
I have one.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I have one quick question. I, I thought it was interesting how you talked about the situations you've been a part of in terms of having multiple stakeholders that you have to sort of balance. So I think that that's probably very true in town, in the Planning Board as well. Can you just speak a little bit to that and sort of how you navigated that in some of your experiences?
How I've navigated it? Under this, no set plan for navigating it because each situation has its unique environment to it. I mean, as I mentioned, there are chairman of departments of academic centers that have big egos. And they're, and they're constantly looking for more space than the hospital administration really wants to provide for them. How I've navigated it, I've tried to not force myself into any direction that I would be recommending until it becomes clear that there is a direction that's going ahead. In some cases, there are decision makers that can set the direction of a certain planning scheme. In others, it differs case by case. But you have to understand the needs of all. As I said, the nurses come in and they really know what's going on and what's needed in the department. And so I tend to side with the nurses.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all the time we have for this candidate. Thank you, Bill. And appreciate your, your volunteering for this position. Our next candidate, and I apologize for, oh, what is it? I believe it's Duo U? Did I, no way, W X Y Z. It's Cheryl Wolf. I apologize. I do not know my alphabet. So Cheryl, if you would like to unmute yourself, I'm sorry, I should ask, how would you like to be addressed?
As Cheryl.
As Cheryl, okay, thank you. And let me start with the questions. The first question is, could you please, and again, please try to limit yourself to two minutes, please list two challenges, issues and opportunities facing Winchester between now and 2030 that the Planning Board will have a key role in addressing?
Yeah, I have to say that Bill really nailed it in identifying housing and the development of downtown because we've made some major changes in our zoning, as well as North Main Street, which I think is also a part of, it's very much a part of the Planning Board's future in terms of what we might be looking at, where housing could develop. And I think that that's, it, it's critical that we make decisions and we plan on the Planning Board for things that we are going to need to evaluate very thoughtfully. I also feel that we have in front of us a potentially something that is always present, which is being resilient in the built environment. And again, that's, that's equally important to, to housing as much as it is to our commercial development along North Main, as well as the way that we, we look at the changes that could potentially take place to the historic aspects of Winchester, but also, you know, inviting new, new types of building that are respectful of climate change and what we have to do in order to be resilient going forward. We may not be able to maintain certain buildings as they are today and there's changes that would need to take place. So I think we need to look at both how our town addresses the planning of housing and also the planning going forward of, of a resilient built environment.
Okay, um, thank you. The next question is, what are the priorities that you would bring to the board? And how do they relate to the existing board priorities?
Well, I, I happen to have served on the board and I've only been off for about a month now. So, so I am aware of some of the things that the board is looking at. But I think that the board has North Main Street in mind as, as a, as something that's really critical to, to our planning of the future of, of Winchester. And I think that it's going to only strengthen our zoning in, in the center of town. And I think that that's where, I think that's where I would want to bring my expertise. And I do have a breadth of experience. I'm a licensed architect who has worked. Well, actually, just to kind of give a little more insight on myself, I, I built my career while raising a family and I was lucky enough to find Winchester in that process. So I've been here for twenty-three years and I think that my professional experience has been sort of grounded in community because of my raising a family at the same time as, as pursuing my career. But I've had experience with developers, both currently with science, which I'm working in Kendall Square currently, building. And I've also worked with residential development, community, community developers. And also I've worked with developers who are building, for instance, I worked on the planning for the Plymouth Courthouse in Plymouth, Mass, where we were taking historic building and looking forward into it being residential, a community market, basically taking historic building and preserving it, but at, at the same time preserving it for the community. So I think that that's something that we, at, you know, looking at Winchester, knowing Winchester the way that I do, I think that's, that's where our values are in terms of preserving Winchester, but also rebuilding Winchester. And so working with developers to do that the right way is something that I think we need to do.
So, um, that, I think you've already started answering the next question. So please keep that in mind when you look at your clock because we're, we're, we're running a little late. What unique blend of skills, experience and perspectives do you bring? And how in particular would they help the Planning Board advance its goals?
I think that I'm, and I appreciate Bill's comments. I think that I'm a collaborator. I work on teams. I work in architecture. I am not retired. I continue to work. And I think that, I think that once I get back to commuting into the city and understand the growth that's potentially going to happen in Winchester based on, we are on a commuter rail. There's so much that we have to build here in terms of a younger, stronger town in terms of housing. And so I, I think that I can bring both, bring a little bit of the city and youthfulness to, to my ideas and my opinions. And I also think that I, I'm, I'm a good team player. I think that's really important actually to the Planning Board.
Thank you. And then the very last question before we turn it over to the board. Do you have or anticipate that you might have any conflict of interest in this position?
No, I, I don't believe I do.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, any of the board, other board members wish to ask a question? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you. Mute myself.
And yes, please do. Unless you have a dog. Dogs are always welcome to, no, they're not. And our next candidate, and again, I apologize if I mispronounced it, is Duo U? And if you could say, how would you like to be addressed?
Yeah, Tommy Duo.
Okay, Duo. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Give you the first, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. There has been a, there was a procedural question that was asked by a board member and I apologize, I meant to do it in between. Heather Hannan, you had a procedural question?
Yeah, I was just wondering how we would handle the fact that two Select Board members missed the first ten minutes of one of the interviews and whether it's okay that they would be relying only on a, a letter of interest and resume, whereas that's different than their impressions of the other candidates.
Oh, you know, that's not something that I considered when, Susan, I met to discuss how these would work. I, I would hope that the two board members would, I don't know, I do not know the answer to that question. I think that we can bring up that discussion when we get to the votes and we can hear whether, how those two board members answer that question. But why don't we, that's a very good one. Why don't we continue with the question, with the interviews and then we'll get back to the procedural part? So, So Duo, please, the first question is. Please list two challenges, issues and opportunities facing Winchester between now and 2030. That the planning board will have a key role in addressing. And again, if you could try to keep your answers to around two minutes, please.
Thank you everyone. So to me, I think, you know, so Winchester is in a very unique geographic, you know, locations. Between a city and, and a real suburb. So there are a lot of opportunities for next 10 years to really for us to look into how to build a healthy lifestyle, you know, opportunities. With myself has two kids and there are a lot of, you know, amazing kids in town. And that really plays a big part in how we're planning forward for next 10 years. How do we, you know, build this, you know, opportunity for the healthy lifestyle? Not for ourselves and for, you know, you know, children. And to, and building on, on top of that is, you know, how we try to protect the environment. And that's, you know, can set a really good example for our kids as well is. You know, myself, you know, is an licensed architect, you know, in our field, we all realize, you know. Well, you know, we're aware of the 2030 carbon neutral challenge worldwide. So I think, you know, Winchester, you know, can, can definitely play a part in that to achieve. You know, to help to reduce the carbon footprint. So. My, so to conclude is really for me is to build the community through the urban planning, through the town planning. You know, to achieve, to bring more, more meaningful, great public, you know, space for, for community educational, to protect the environment. Yeah, and that's, that's my answer.
Okay, thank you. Next question is. What are the priorities? And perhaps you've already answered this. What are the priorities that you would bring to the board? And how do they relate to the existing board priorities?
So I think, you know, I see myself as a, you know, young professional, you know. That, that moving to Winchester, you know, for past five, six years. I'm being a newcomer and I, you know, we, we love, my family love Winchester and will plan to live for, for a long time. So I hope I can represent a different voice, being a young professional, being an immigrant, a, a young, young couple with kids. I think one thing I will, you know, a voice for is to, to, to really, you know, get into the community. And talk to the, you know, people. Because there are, you know, you know, demographic shifts in town. We, we live in, in, in condo by Lake Street for a few years. It used to be elderly housing and now, you know, like surprisingly, it's more than half are young families with kids. So, so if I get the opportunity to, to serve on a board and I, I would, you know, advocate to really get into the community. And really to research and realize all the changes and shifts. And that's can give us, you know, more, more data and more feedback, you know, from, to really from the community.
Okay, thank you. Question number three. What unique blend of skills, experience and perspectives do you bring? And how in particular would they help the planning board advance its goals?
I've been an architect for almost 10 years, you know, so, so working for the last 10 years, you know, I've been a team player, a collaborator. My work mostly involving the institutional planning at Harvard MIT. So I understand, you know, historical buildings was new. We do our planning through research skills. You know, we do a lot of research and we do programming and planning. So I hope my skill set, my skill box can, can really support a board in a way that. The means of researching and data collect and collecting. And also on top of that, being an architect, you know, I have strong graphic skills to, to help, to communicate. The, our findings and our research results to the town of Winchester.
Okay, thank you. One last question before we turn it over to the board. Do you have or anticipate that you might have any conflict of interest in this position?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. So let us, and thank you for being very good with your time. Is there, are there any questions from the other board members, please? Okay, I will take that as no, and thank you very much. Appreciate you coming forward and if you could mute yourself, that would be excellent. Thank you. Our last candidate is, where do you go? Is Hao Sheng Zhang? And if you could please let us know how you'd like to be addressed?
Just Hao Sheng is fine.
Okay, excellent. Welcome.
Thank you.
First question, again, if we could, I'm resetting my timer here. If we keep it to two minutes, that would be excellent. First question is, please list two challenges, issues and opportunities facing Winchester between now and 2030. That the planning board will have a key role in addressing.
Yep, I guess first question, first issue, first point is probably to already mentioned is energy conservation from the building perspective. Because not only the, the buildings or architectures consume like a 30% of the carbon footprint in, in general. But also I think making the, the building more energy conservative or more green is helpful for, for the whole town environment. And the second part is, I think the school facilities. It'd be great if we can keep a great school system in the town because that's the initial reason. Some of the young professionals or young populations moving to the town. And it is, that's for my family. And we noticed that we have very good high school facility, but we have a little bit outdated, some of the elementary school. So, I mean, in my, in my architecture experience, I have some educational building experience. I can certainly bring it on the board to help with that part.
Okay, second question is. What are the priorities that you would bring to the board? And how do they, sorry, I have to move my window, I apologize. How do they relate to the existing board priorities?
I'm sorry, I didn't know much about the existing priorities, but to, I would say. To, to doing extensive research of existing school system and which part need to be urgently updated. Is probably, I think that's my top priority. And doing the setup goal for the, the green building target. Is probably the, the second priority that I would say.
Okay, thank you. Number three is what unique blend of skills, experience and perspectives do you bring? And how in particular would they help the planning board advance its goals?
Yeah, sure. As I guess. Some of the candidates already mentioned, I guess most of us are, are architects. So we have an architecture background. And I personally, I'm a certified passive house consultant as well. And so I have extensive knowledge of designing building envelopes as well as energy conservation. And I'm also a licensed drone pilot. If it's, there is any needs for the planning, planning wide survey that I can definitely help.
You are the very first person who have ever said that. Okay, thank you. And number four, do you have or anticipate that you might have any conflicts of interest in this position?
I don't think so.
Okay. Let's open it up to other members of the board. Would anyone like to ask a question? And I guess no one would. Thank you very much. If you could mute yourself. And. I guess now we move to the, the deliberation phase and Heather raised the interesting procedural question. So. First of all, why don't we turn to the two members who came in late and ask them if they feel that they could. Perform their duties appropriately, given that they did not hear all of the. Discussion. So let's do this in, I can't do, I'll do it in order on my screen. I can't do alphabetical. Mariano, please, if you would.
Yes, I feel like I can fulfill my duties.
Okay, and then Richard Mucci, please.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I feel like I can. I just have a point of order question. The agenda just mentions. It doesn't mention any vote tonight. Does, is it, should there be on the agenda a vote?
I believe the agenda said, what, doesn't the agenda say selection? I don't have it here before me. Typically, we, we come together and we interview and select in the same go. Can someone please put the agenda up? Whoever has control of the screen, please, so we can verify that. Okay.
I, Suzanne did the agenda, so.
Yeah, okay. Open meeting planner. Okay. Well. It has been the. I mean, we have always had interview and selection on the same night. I do not know whether or not this is an open meeting law concern, which is I guess where you're coming from. We do not have town council with us. I personally am willing to go forward with a vote. I.
Can I comment? So when I was chair of the select, oh, Susan, go ahead.
I was going to say that select the. The open meeting law requires that you have the topic on the agenda. It doesn't necessarily have to say vote or not vote.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when I, when I was chair a few years ago, town council specifically asked us not, that it's a good idea to not put vote or deliberate. It's just to put the topic, which is enough to inform the public that it will be discussed and possibly voted on.
Okay, I will, I will. I will bow to your experiences and then I think we are going to go ahead with the vote. And everyone is on the honor system here, so what we're going to do. Heather, I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it did. Are we not discussing? Are we going right to voting? I don't remember how we did it last time.
I believe we're going to go directly to voting. I think that would be, I think, the most expedient and for. So what we're going, Brian, you were, where'd you go, Brian? There you are. Brian will be tallying our votes. And so. What will happen is we will go through, I will. Ask the planning board members to vote and Susan, if you would go and do a roll call of the select board members. And each person will indicate which candidate they wish to vote for. And Brian will tally them and then we will see how the votes lie. So why don't I start because I'm talking? So in this order, Sally Dale, please, your choice.
Bill Fouchet.
Okay. Heather Hannan?
I will also vote for Bill.
Okay. Jerius is voting for Wolf. Eaching Scott, please.
Scott for Wolf.
Okay. Thank you. And all over to you, Susan.
So I'll start with Amy.
You for Shapiro, please.
Mike?
Wolf, please, for Bettencourt.
Shouldn't go too fast. Rich?
Wolf for Mucci, please. Thank you.
Mariano?
Wolf, please.
And I will vote for you.
Okay, Brian, if you would please tally those. So we have a total of nine votes. Five are required to be in the majority. We have one candidate with five votes and that is Cheryl Wolf. So I believe that we managed to get through this very quickly. Again, I want to thank all of our candidates. I really appreciate that you have come forward and are dedicated to making this town better. Some of you may be breathing a sigh of relief that you don't have to go to lots of evening meetings. But please, please contact the town for other volunteer positions. And there are always openings on the board, so please, please come back to us.
There, there are a number of boards and committees where design and management of complex projects. Are skill sets that are, can be very valuable. And openings come up all the time because there's a sort of rotation. The ones I can think of are design review, the zoning board of appeals. The education facilities planning and building committee or EFPBC, if you're interested in schools. Those are the ones I can think of, but they're, you know, there are openings all the time, so please do, and I do encourage you to apply again.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the boards and I'd like to congratulate Cheryl. And I'd like to apologize for the comment about Heather's T-shirt. It's a Princeton T-shirt and my 50th reunions are going on now, but unfortunately virtually. And it's not the same as being on campus.
Okay, no problem. Thank you much. So. Before we close this joint session. I had a few comments that I would like to make. And they are more general comments, but I thought this was an appropriate time to make them since the two boards are meeting together. So I would like to acknowledge that this election process has been a great improvement over what happened last October. And now it's going to get a little more serious. The relationship between the planning board and the select board has become increasingly strained over the last few years. And this is not news to anyone. Town government depends upon trust. Trust between boards, trust between members of boards, trust that we are all acting for the good of the town. Last October, the planning board and the select board found themselves in a very similar situation to what we are today. At that time, the last bridge of trust between these two boards was almost totally destroyed. By the actions of the select board chair and the select board. That selection using approach which did not result in a transparent and fair selection process. The planning board recognized this immediately after the meeting and contacted town clerk, town council and the select board chair. We wanted to remedy the gross distortions of that process. That process was amenable to correction and the injury could have been corrected, but it was not. There were several opportunities where the select board could have come in and helped remedy that process. The first was when the chair was, was advised by the planning board chair that there was a problem that the entire planning board had with that process. At that point, he could simply have fulfilled the promise that he had made, which is in the transcript you should have in your packet, which says, and I quote. If there is some problem, our motion at the end to preserve, to approve that person will be contingent on certifying the rank choice process. Was accurate in case something does go wrong. Something did go wrong. And the appropriate response would have been to revisit that decision-making process. That was not done. Subsequent to that, there was a meeting held between town council, Mina Marcarios. Chair von Mering of the planning board. Chair Bettencourt of the select board to discuss the planning board's concerns. At that meeting, Chair Bettencourt explicitly refused to convene a joint meeting to remedy the problems. Subsequently, the planning board members present at that joint selection meeting. Subsequently, the planning board members present at that joint selection meeting voted unanimously in a public meeting to request another joint meeting to discuss and remedy the failings of the process. I personally emailed a letter to each of the select board members delineating our concerns. A copy of that letter should be in your packet. What happened after that is absolutely nothing. There was not a single response from the select board. So, we have a problem here. We have three events that we have to reckon with. We have a public commitment by the chair of the select board that was meant to reassure members that any concerns about the process would be resolved. That was ignored and repudiated. The select board, when presented with a list of serious concerns by the entire planning board, did nothing. The select board, when asked by four of the five members of the planning board to meet and discuss an issue which strikes at the ability of the planning board to operate without a cloud hanging over its member, did nothing. And I want to reiterate that town government depends upon trust between the boards, the boards and the public they serve. And that trust depends upon openness and transparency and the actions of the select board, especially that of the former chair, has pushed that thin line of trust to the breaking point. The planning board was extremely upset with what happened, if that isn't already obvious. Decisions must be made in the open. They cannot be made by a single person at a private meeting who refuses to schedule a joint meeting, putting in jeopardy the legal authority of the planning board to perform its duties as a special permit granting authority. Decisions cannot be made in the open if an entire board refuses to acknowledge the legitimate concerns of another elected board. The planning board is ready to work, to do our part to serve this town. Two of the candidates who suffered through that process stepped forward to run for election to the planning board. The other candidate who joined the board last October has once more come forward to continue serving. That any of them would do so after the debacle of last October is a testament to their dedication. The onus is now on the select board to repair the trust it has lost. Board has a stark choice. It can either retreat back to the days of the old boys' network where decisions are made behind closed doors, or they can move forward. The events which unfolded at your last meeting on Monday have sent a shockwave through my board, the planning board. Believe me when I say that you have made repair of that last praying bridge of trust very, very difficult. I see this as a moment to move forward, but it has been shown time and time again, before reconciliation comes truth. And I have spoken what I know to be the truth. And on that note, um, we can close the planning board session if, if the board's desire.
I would just say, I would just say, I hope I speak on behalf of the rest of my board, that, um, we intend to rebuild that trust.
I thank you, I look forward to that. This was, this has been an exceedingly sore point. I know that we don't only have two of the former members on this board, but I know I can speak for the four members who were on that planning board, that the rejection of our attempts to outreach and remedy the situation was frustrating, aggravating and struck at the entire heart of our process of trust and town government. So, I thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn from the planning board, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I can.
Could I have a roll call vote, please? And I guess we have to wait Cheryl until you get sworn in again, so, um, Dale?
Dale, I.
Eching Scott?
I.
I've already forgotten who else is on the board, Heather Hannan, please.
Hannah, I.
And this is Jerius, I, thank you very much. I'm sorry that the rest of the people had the listeners to that, but town government can be messy. Thank you much and have a great evening.